Board of Trustees' Agenda, August 9, 2016 to order. Wayne, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call to the board.
Trustee Clark?
Present.
Trustee Ertler?
Here.
Trustee Giesemann?
Here.
Trustee Kibitsky?
Here.
Supervisor Tesher?
Here.
Let the records know clerk flowers also in attendance.
Do we hear a motion to approve the minutes for July 12, 2016, board meeting?
So do.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Giesemann?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tesher?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Any communications?
Yes, I have two. One is a thank you letter, and I believe it's from the children's theater group that go upstairs because they're saying, "Thank you so much for letting us use your stage. Hope to see you at the show. Contact us for group reads." The second one is from Chief of Police, Tom Wenzel, thanking Andrew and the township custodian staff for their help so they could hold their heroin and opium presentation in the auditorium last week. It said that the program was very well received, and it was a successful event within the township. It's running on the RBTV so that people can educate themselves about this deadly epidemic in the suburbs.
Could I just say that they would like to redo that program sometime this fall because, although they had good attendance there, about 50 people, it was so important and so well received that they'd like to redo that.
Yeah, it's no big deal, just a reasonable room. May I any preservers' remarks? Yes, Fran. Reminder, five minutes, Fran.
Fran, supervisor of state, I just wanted to update everyone on what's going on in the Satchel Office. We are currently open for appeals with the Board of Review through August 30. We are running career field seminars with the Board of Review this year. Thursday, August 18th, here at Town Hall for Riverside. Thursday, August 25th for North Riverside at the Community Center. And Monday, August 29th at the Ford Field Library for our post in Ford Field. So this is the latest year of training now, and next year we already discussed, so we're just trying to get out to outreach as many people as possible. Thank you for everyone's volunteering to help me at the table at the farmer's market this week. We will be at the community table handing out anything that's township-related, so just let me know if there's anything else that you want me to hand over the table. And it's like, as far as Riverside Lawn, Mr. Sir, I don't know if anyone's seen the article in today's landmark online. It looks like the county has contracts on 16 homes in Riverside Lawn. And so this is what I have there.
Fran, isn't the county doing the quadrennial assessment this year?
It's a triennial.
A triennial, I'm sorry.
This is next year, 2017 will figure this out.
So this year's tax bills will be kind of unchanged, but they'll put a little...
Yes, pretty much unchanged.
What do you see for the next year?
Well, some assessors going up, not all. It depends on the type of house people have. But as our assessors go up, then generally our tax rate has come down. So it's always going to be kind of an expand next year. We just can't wait to see.
If what goes up, our tax rate goes down?
If our assessors go up, the tax rate generally comes down.
What goes up must come down.
So hopefully that's next year.
Thank you, preservers' remarks. I am the board trustee's report.
I just had, which I got an email from Sarah Edwards from Cook County Department of Environmental Control, and she was wanting to know if we would want to do something to help spread the word about smart meters, either through an outreach event, a newsletter article, just some way.
Gas meters, water meters?
Electric.
Electric. Electric meters.
Yeah, I think most of the people in this area have, sorry, have the smart meters already, but they may not be aware of what they can do to...
We could put on a program or something if she wants to present a program, but that's, that would be for the villages, I would imagine. They're, you know, they've already gotten out the word, but it wouldn't hurt to, you know, if she wants to come in and, you know...
Yeah, she would do that, come out, or if we wanted to just get some materials from her.
Either way.
The thing about having a presentation is sometimes it's difficult to get people out.
Yeah.
If she didn't care, five people showed up, you know, that would be...
Maybe she could have something to tell people how to read those meters. They're impossible to read. I mean, there's numbers flashing all the time, and I don't know what they are.
That would be a good question.
That would be a good question, I guess.
Do you want me to run that through if she wants to come out? And I guarantee you...
She's got to give me a call, or, you know, and we could set up a time and a date and a room.
Okay. I'll email her back, getting her to fill out a contract about coming out.
Sounds good.
Okay, thanks.
Any other trustees' reports? Mental health, or through boards? Whole business. Update the auditorium plaque for Judy Barzapinka. What's in front of us? For Judy Bar, the latest, it should be final.
Well, they want to add the words, the auditorium, this auditorium is dedicated to the memory of Judy Barzapinka, or...
So we have it on scuffs. Oh, yeah, it could be to the, yeah, to the memory. Don't you think so? Yeah.
And just, and if they add those words, can I give him the go-ahead? I can, he'll email me a proof, and I'll email it out.
Okay.
And then, if that's okay with everybody, I'll give him the go-ahead.
And if they send us a bill, is it okay to pay, or do we want to wait? Because it's gonna be...
Didn't we already pay?
We paid a half.
Fifty-five, yeah. Do we know what the balance is?
Was it 2,500?
The plaque was 4,000, I think it was a little bit under 4,000.
Yeah, it was.
So I think we've made down to 2,000, yeah.
Well, we should either approve and mount, or tell them that they're gonna wait until the next, I don't know how soon they would have this done.
Yeah, I don't know either, a couple weeks, I would imagine. So I think we could wait until we find out.
Okay, just a couple of weeks, and they'll send the bill.
Okay. Then, as you know, somebody offered to donate us, to donate a plaque for Judy that would tell a little bit more about the stories of her life.
I'm gonna make a suggestion.
Okay.
That we table this until next month, because we just got it tonight.
Oh, okay, I like that.
And I think we should all review it and look at it. I mean, we just got it.
For any typos or anything, make sure it's, everything is correct.
Right.
Right, that's what, and please let me know. I don't think there are any typos, but...
Maybe some wording.
And wording, wording change, I'm always open to that, you know? So this is really kind of a first draft. I've actually already thought of some words that I'd like to change.
Did you draft this, Mary Robert?
I did draft this.
You did, okay.
That's what. So, yes, and you're really good with, a little bit better than I am on grammar and everything, so if you see...
Improving.
Improving.
Batting i's and crossing t's.
So I appreciate any input anybody gives me.
Okay. Okay, and then the memorandum and room dedication plaque for Scuffy. We have in front of us, the office dedicated to the memory of Schofield Scuff, Riverside Township Assessor, 1969 to 2009. And that would go on the outside of the door, or on the wall right by the entrance of the office upstairs.
That almost looks like his year of birth and year of death.
I can't hear you, Anne.
Said those dates almost look like the year of birth and year of death.
Yeah.
But that's obviously not the case.
Do we try to change that a little bit?
Another thing you might change under the sentence known as Mr. Riverside, that first sentence...
Okay, we're not on that one.
Oh, we're on the other one, okay.
We're on the other one, and we should let Fran look at it, too.
Is there any, everybody agree on this?
Or do we want, Fran, do you want to show your copy to Fran?
On this one?
Maybe the thing is to put the title below Riverside Township, like with Gary's over there. And that way it's clearer.
I have another one, so keep it.
So do we want to...
Oh, and assessor, I'm doing that, and then top of the dates, correct? Is that what you want?
Yeah, or, yeah, like that one is.
Were you saying?
Like on that wall.
Okay, you want Schofield, Scuffgrows, Riverside Township, then assessor, 1969?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Right, right.
Okay. So...
Yeah, move assessor down, is that what you're saying? Yeah.
Yes.
Then if, you know, it's the term of office, and not just birth and death, well, it's more clear anyway.
Okay, does everybody approve of this as...
I have a question, and I'm just not sure...
Including the price of $322.
I have a question here.
Is it this office or this room? I don't know.
Well, they...
It's the office.
It's the office. Okay.
So the only thing we're moving down is assessor, is that right?
Correct. Right, everybody?
Right. Okay.
Yeah, or you could put assessor above Riverside Township, and that would work, too, I think, with the dates below.
I think that would look better. Riverside Township, right.
And then the dates below that?
Exactly.
What do you think, Fran?
Yeah, I think it's...
What do you guys think?
And here, do you want scuff or scuffy?
No, scuff.
Scuff, yeah.
Scuff I heard more than scuffy over the years.
Okay.
So...
Assessor before Riverside Township.
Okay, so I will have to make those changes and send it out for everybody to look at, and then give him, when I get your feedback, I'll give him the go. But we need a motion to spend not more than $400 on this.
Do I hear it?
It was 322, but I don't know if there's...
I'll make a motion that we cap the limit...
There is no tax.
$400 on the plaque for Schofield Gross.
Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesemann?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tesher?
Yes.
Motion carry.
An update on the labels for...
Wait, I have a, on the second page, in memory of Schofield Gross?
Oh, this was the one, and this needs a lot of work.
Okay, I was gonna say, because that first sentence under Mr. Riverside is...
You don't want that.
Well, no, it's, he an insurance business in town.
Oh, no.
Yeah, that's out, okay. It just doesn't look right.
And also grandchildren's spelled wrong, I know that is a typo there.
Is this for next month, too?
This will be for next month, too. It's, the cost on having, you know, if you're on that wall out there, there are a lot of plaques that say, "In memory..."
Right, like that's an example.
And a lot of those plaques are 14 by 10 with 1/16.
The 14 high by 24 deep.
Deep.
Long, 24 this way. It'll fit at the very end and give a little space between.
Okay.
And that's the one I thought, "In memory of Scuffy Gross or Schofield Gross," and then assessor from...
Would you rather have it 14 by 34 then? I mean, the bronze kind it might be have changed, but we just don't have that played out.
Well, yeah, only because that's basically what we were talking about. And those are the measurements of all the other ones.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we want, do we want a little story about him, or do we want just...
No, I think just like where it says, Charles A. Lance, Township Clerk.
But don't we want kind of the same thing that we have upstairs, Riverside Township, and then assessor, and then the dates?
In memory of, in memory, top line, "In memory." Second line, "Of." Third line, "Schofield Gross Township Assessor, 1969 through 19..."
No, maybe you should do it the same as, assessor Riverside Township.
You know, I'm disappointed by how they did this.
Pardon?
Township Assessor, like they did. So do Township Assessor.
Township Assessor.
So how many plaques are we doing here?
Well, we're doing one that the township is paying for, for up in...
The hallway.
In the hallway.
By the table where we put material, there's one slot left.
Okay.
And this size would fit it.
Okay.
But this is for the Lions Club. The Lions Club would have offered to pay half of the plaque if we mentioned Lions Club on there.
You know, and that we're gonna have to really talk about.
Which is why I put this longer thing kind of together, you know, talking about some of the things that he did here in the township.
You know, and, you know, we just got that tonight, and we should look it over. Right now, we're, we should be talking about the plaque that's going in the hall and on his office. Okay?
Okay, so are you telling me that you don't want the Lions Club to pay for half of this?
Not for half of this, no.
No, okay, all right.
If the board decides for what is written of, you know, known as Mr. Riverside, let them pay for the whole thing.
Okay, that's what...
But I don't know whether or not we will even do that, or where we could even put it.
Well, we don't, you know, the Lions Club can do something else.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if we're gonna put it, you know, I would think we'd put it by the Lions Club plaque over here where they have Person of the Year, right outside the township door, next to the Township of Riverside bulletin board.
Yeah, we could do something there, or, you know, the Lions Club just, they want to do something to memorialize him. It doesn't necessarily have to be in this building. You know, we, there are many other ways, I think, that we could memorialize him.
Right, you know, I'm just saying it's someplace else to put it.
Yeah.
Okay, but I think this should be going on next month and decide...
Okay.
Where we want to put it, and maybe you can talk to the Lions Club, whoever you talked to before, and get some more, some other suggestions to throw at us.
Okay.
See what I'm saying?
Right, yes.
So what are we doing, what are we doing with this?
Do I hear a motion to, we already got a motion for the room dedication, office dedication, okay, at $322, or whatever it was, approved to make that sign. The next motion, do I hear, for 14 by 24 inch bronze plaque? I thought you had gotten prices on those.
I didn't get a price on something like this.
Okay.
But I will call tomorrow to get a price.
And try to get it to us before the next meeting, so we can get it in the back and review it.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay.
Just for a second, mark this table till next one.
Yeah, this plaque, yeah.
Because this is gonna be, I would bet this is gonna be several thousand dollars.
That would be comparable to the Judy plaque.
Well, the Judy plaque is high because we have that molded face.
Yeah, so somewhat less.
Right.
So this will be less than that.
Yeah, but it could be three grand.
But it's probably gonna be around two.
What, I can't hear you?
It's probably gonna be around 2,000.
Yeah, let's wait and see.
Yep, we'll wait and see.
Okay, update on the labels for the...
Well, the world is full of labels. All different sizes tied. So it will help if I get a copy of that brochure, so we can see the exact thing of it.
Yeah, I'm in here.
And then I will have a, and then we also, I need to know how many labels we want. We ordered 20,000 brochures, so do we want labels for 10,000? And then the other question is, Wayne, I know you wanted this, the postman just to deliver these with the mail. Have we talked to the post office about that?
No.
I think we did, and I went to Riverside Post Office, and he sent me to North Riverside. North Riverside, the guy was out, and I went to see him, and then the appeal started, so I didn't have a chance to go up there, back over there, but, so they still in work, and they're trying to get it, but I think they'll be doing it.
Yeah, remind me, I've got a, one or two on my desk.
Okay, that's what...
I'll give them to you, so you know what's on.
Okay, so that'll be good. And basically, the label will say Riverside Township, 27 Riverside Road, the phone number, and all of our names and our positions. So...
Yeah, okay, but we need a price on those?
We need, I need to know how many.
Yeah, and I thought you were gonna get about 100 printed up or something.
I can get 100 printed, you know, tomorrow.
Yeah, just so we can...
Yeah, once again, when I see it...
Get it out at the fleet, or...
Yeah, the, once again, when I see it, and I can see how big that label needs to be, I can print those up...
Yeah.
Very easily on my computer.
Okay.
Doesn't somebody have to follow with the post office about this?
I, Fran.
Fran, yes. So this'll be next month, too. Okay, going on. New business. People Care Annual Grant. They're looking for $10,000, their annual grant. Last year, we gave them nine, to 14, we gave them 10. 13, we gave them 9,500. 12, 9,000. 11, 9,000. Do I hear a motion to grant People Care $10,000?
I make a motion, we grant People Care $10,000, as they requested.
Second motion. Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Kibitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Giesemann?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Supervisor Tesher?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Riverside Seniors Annual Grant?
No, this isn't the annual grant. This is an addition to the annual grant, the, we don't have an annual grant now, it's a line item in our budget.
You do have an annual grant...
Okay.
Of $5,000.
Which is a line item in our budget.
Correct.
Okay, so this is...
This is over that, right?
This is over that, because the senior, the seniors really, really like the exercise class. And this is to allow, we have one on Monday, you know, from 12 to 1, and they would, and we've been doing one on Wednesdays from the senior budget. And this is a grant to continue that for September through December.
The, my only concern with this is that it's only servicing Riverside seniors.
Well, it can service any, it can service anybody.
I know, but North Riverside Golden Agers don't really know about it.
Well, we can tell them about it.
You know, we either tell them about it, or the second one should be held over in North Riverside, one or the other, in my mind. You know, that's, you know...
Well, let's tell them about it and continue to have it here.
This is only gonna be one day a week.
Wednesdays.
This is gonna be one day.
Yeah, but you also have that one Mondays.
We have one on Mondays.
Monday and Wednesday.
Is that gonna continue, too? But that's not part of this grant.
Right, we approved a budget to continue the Monday class through December.
Okay, I forgot about that.
And this is to have a Wednesday class in September, October, November, December. Is that what I wrote on? Yeah, so through December.
Well, that's a good idea, to do one of them in North Riverside and one here.
I think it's only fair to tell you the truth.
I mean, we have Brookfield, and we could advertise it, but there are...
Yeah, but, see, with Brookfield, you got about two or three seniors. The rest are from Proviso Township or Lions Township. You know, that's what, we used to buy it down years ago, I don't know if you remember, when Gary was still alive. We used to buy his birthday cakes for the people in Riverside Township over there. But it got to the point, one or two seniors, and that's all it is, from Riverside Township to go to the Brookfield senior, it wasn't worth it. North Riverside has their share of activities, and Riverside is...
No, I'm not gonna argue with, about that, Wayne, I'm just thinking the fairness of it.
The what?
Fairness of it. Being fair to each community, Wayne. I may be wrong, let me know, you know, I'll go along with what the board says, but my thinking is that if you have Mondays here, and you want Wednesdays, it should be, you know, offered to North Riverside here, it's at North Riverside.
Well, this is a, an event that has just started, and it's growing, and I think we should let it mature a little bit before we move it.
Any other, you know, anybody agree with Wayne?
You could just try advertising it up there, and see if you get any response.
And the facility here is better than the facility at North Riverside.
Wayne attends the class, don't you, Wayne?
Yes.
Twice a week, and you enjoy it.
I'll be there tomorrow.
Be there tomorrow.
And see if there's any interest in North Riverside attending this, and then, in the future, make a commitment whether you want, want to change it. But right now, just offer, offer them advertisement that it's going on, and they're more than willing to come.
I can take a flyer up to North Riverside and put it, have them post it up there, and I can also put an ad in the landmark.
Good. Yeah, okay.
So...
And I'll call Riverside Rec and tell them it's, or North Riverside Rec, let them know, you know, the push, and... And I'll call Riverside Rec and tell them it's, or North Riverside Rec, let them know, you know, the push, and, uh... Okay.
I make a motion, we approve the request for twenty-four hundred dollars for Riverside Township seniors.
Exercise class.
Exercise class.
Specifically...
For September, October, November, December. I'll second the motion, if that's it. Twenty sixteen. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
He seconded it.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next grant is for our North Riverside Golden Agers grant of five thousand dollars. We gave, uh, since twenty twelve, we gave five thousand dollars each year, except for twenty thirteen and twenty eleven, we didn't give them anything, because they didn't request anything. Do I hear a motion to, um, grant the Gold, North Riverside Golden Agers, uh, five thou, their five thousand dollars that is in the budget?
So moved.
I second.
Any questions, concerns?
It could, Wayne, assuming this is approved, could you ask them the next time to give us, uh, more detail on the breakdown?
Yeah, that would help.
It's general, but it'd be nice to know how much they're spending for the different categories.
Right. They have sixty members.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Kibitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Didn't ask me.
Supervisor Tusher, I apologize.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Next grant coming up is North Riverside Fire Department grant of eight thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and eighteen cents for Matt Jack's airlifting rescue bags and air gas monitors. You know, as the board always kind of remember, I'm big on safety issues, police and fire.
I'll make, I'll make the motion that we purchase for the North Riverside Fire Department, the Matt Jack airlifting rescue bags for forty-seven hundred seventeen dollars, air gas monitors for forty-one hundred ninety-five dollars, eighteen cents, and a total of eight thousand nine hundred twelve dollars and eighteen cents. Uh, should we do a plus or minus ten percent on that? No, that's the price? Okay, then, then I'll leave it at that.
Okay, do I hear a second? Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, next grant is for, uh, Brookfield Police Department grant. They're asking for nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Ninety-four cents.
It is for lights, you know, for slowing down, for traffic, from what I make out, um, you know, it's like that, uh, speed sign over, uh, across from Presbyterian Church, from what I make out. You know, where you're driving.
We purchased that, we purchased that for the police department.
Oh, we did?
Yes, we did. There are two signs we bought.
Oh, so these are the ones that say your speed is?
Yeah.
Okay.
We should put our name on those things.
It'd have to be specially made.
No, just a tag saying donated by...
Driving by.
By the township.
Yeah, but if they get a ticket, then they'll be mad at us.
You what? Mary, I didn't hear what you said.
So, if they get a ticket because they're speeding, then they'll probably be mad at us.
Okay.
Um, are these things, these aren't like red light cameras, they just tell you right that they're there?
Right, you know, if you take a look.
But we need more publicity for gifts that we give.
We do, so...
Well, you, you know, you, you try to let the landmark know, and they're very toothy on what they want to put in. That's the problem lately. Yeah, it's the radar speed signs for school's own safety. You know, it's like the second or third pageant from...
Yeah.
The Village, the second pageant. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we purchase, uh, for the Brookfield Police Department, the, with speed monitors, the digital speed monitors. Do we need a better description on that, or is, will that suffice for nine thousand eight hundred seventy-one dollars, ninety-four cents?
I think radar speed signs, I think would be...
Cause I'm looking, I'm looking at solar powered digital speed monitors, that's what I'm reading here.
You know what, I think that, uh, this grant is including these jackets.
Yes, it is.
To, and safety vest.
Do we have a second here?
No, uh, I'll add that in there.
Okay, no, 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 the, a second to the motion?
No, I just made the motion.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll make a second, and then can we have some discussion?
Yes.
Go, where, did you have something?
No, I'm just saying that the radar thing is six thousand, and then the safety jackets and gloves and vest are sixteen, uh, sixteen hundred, and then they're also asking for ten LED stophats. And another, uh, two thousand dollars, so...
Well, please add that all in my motion, if you would.
Well, that's the top, the ninety-eight is...
That, that's all the ninety-eight.
That comes up to the ninety-eight, seventy-one, ninety-four.
Yeah, with all this, so...
Please add that in my motion.
But, okay, my comment was, the next request is also from Brookfield. And we have, uh, another nine thousand dollar request, and we have two more, uh, grant periods in this, uh, budget cycle. So, I'm wondering if maybe we should consider a partial on this, and asking them to come back in February or something, maybe, you know, just to make sure that we have enough funds.
Okay, you know, I like that, I, my thinking is, the speed signs for the school, yes, and that would be a cost of...
That was six thousand...
Six thousand...
Eighty dollars.
Eighty dollars.
Yeah, which is a chunk by itself.
Yes, but then they're asking for, uh, sixteen hundred and forty-five, forty-four, and twenty-one, forty-six.
Thirty-seven, almost thirty-eight, thirty-nine dollars.
In my mind, crossing guards, and the school safety, there's only one school in Riverside Township. And that's Hollywood School. Okay. You know, and because RB with the cross, that's in Riverside. That would be, you know, their group that would come to us if they wanted these jackets and stuff. My proposal is, give them half of the, um, thirty-seven, ninety-one. Uh, due to the fact that there's only Hollywood School in the township. We're paying for Lyons Township over in, like, in Proviso, over in, um, Lincoln School, and, uh, over on the, um, south side of Vulcan Avenue, and we'd be paying for Grove School. And that's Proviso Township.
Well, they said they had fifteen guards, I don't know where they're all from.
But they have fourteen school crossings, so that would, that would, which is right, we only have one school in Riverside Township. So, you know, maybe, you know, we should give them two jackets, two safety vests, two pairs of gloves.
I, I still think we ought to pay for the sign, and then ask them to reapply for the balance in February or something, when we know better what our commission will be. And like I said, we have another request right after this.
Does anybody want to amend the, uh...
Well, I will amend it to whatever, you said, that, that's a much better idea to do the half.
Cause at least you're...
But you know, cause our next grant is from the Brookfield Fire Department, which is a...
Right, that's, that's what I'm saying.
And that's for defibrillators.
Right, and...
So, are we doing half of the amount that they're requesting?
Almost, a little bit greater.
Yeah, do the amount for the sign.
I'll amend the motion, what is a little bit greater, does anybody figure that out?
Six thousand seven...
Six thousand eighty dollars.
Six thousand eight dollars.
Eighty.
Eighty.
Eighty, I'm sorry, six thousand eighty.
For the sign.
For the sign.
For the signs.
Yeah.
So, a second, that amended motion, Anne?
Yes.
Okay, what's the total now?
Six thousand eighty dollars.
Six thousand eighty.
Six oh eight oh, all right.
And let them know to reapply, uh, next, next...
February.
Yeah, for, um, you know, but let them know, yeah, we only have one school in the township, why should we pay it for, you know, the other ones?
Well, we don't have to explain that to them.
No, we'd have to, you know, just in case they ask or wonder why.
If they ask, then we'll tell them.
Uh, roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried for five thousand eighty.
Eight, six thousand.
Six thousand eighty.
I'm sorry, six thousand eighty, I had it written down and read it wrong. I'm dyslexic tonight.
Don't you hate when that happens?
Yes.
Um, Village of, uh, Brookfield Fire Department requesting a grant.
Pretty hard to cut this one down.
Right.
And their AEDs, you know, both their fire departments do cover, you know, whatever sections that they can in the township, and throughout Riverside also, and other communities. Um, do I hear a motion to grant, uh, Village of Brookfield Fire Department, nine thousand eight dollars for AEDs?
Well, we would purchase them.
Purchase them. Do I hear a motion?
So...
Do I hear a second?
Second, the motion.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Kibitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, authorization of event to celebrate Township Day, and you brought this up.
Yeah.
Would you like to, uh, explain?
Um, I got a notice from TOI, maybe you did too.
Yeah.
Oh, this isn't it, um, Township Day, which is just to recognize townships and what they do, is September... No, not September, August, wait a minute, let me see. September twenty-first. Um, some townships are doing things like, just doing little projects to memorialize the day, uh, recognize the day. I was suggesting that maybe we could do something like have an ice cream social, and ask people who came to bring a, a non-perishable food item to the food pantry. So, it would be a way to, you know, replenish the food pantry, and then maybe bring people together in a social atmosphere.
You want it outside or inside?
I think you gotta do it, plan to do it inside, because you don't know what the weather would be.
My next question, Leanne, when is, uh, North Riverside Chili Cook Off day?
Sixteen. Sixteen, which is the Friday before.
Oh, okay, I just wanna make sure.
It's not the same day.
It's not the same day.
It's close.
Yeah.
It's close.
I knew it was close, but, yeah.
Yeah. Um, I don't know, I mean...
Could I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
There also would be a day that the farmer's market is going on.
Oh, yeah.
So, maybe we could, and this is the farmer's, it's over there, I mean, could we hand out something over at the farmer's market?
But how would we do ice cream over there?
I, we'd have to do, like, the, um, like, ice cream bars or ice cream sandwiches or something like that.
There's people who sell that stuff at the farmer's market.
Yeah.
Not ice cream.
They got some guy with the slushy.
And they sell smoothies.
Yeah, smoothies and ice cream and slushies and...
And they wouldn't be able to bring up, people wouldn't be bringing food items for the pantry, they're, they're shopping for themselves for fresh vegetables and whatever.
Well, it, in my, um, hopes was that we would have the plaque for Judy, and we could celebrate Township Day by insta, you know, having a little bit of session for the plaque.
That would be good.
If we could do that, like, you know, at five or five-thirty.
Well, how, you think it'd be ready by then?
Um, I can only hope.
Well, let's not count on it.
Yeah, that'd be good, too, because I thought, too, maybe we could do something like how, that group that you had a couple times, I can't remember the name, for the seniors meeting, that people liked, but maybe a little bit of music or something, but...
Me? Are you talking about me, the people that I, oh, um, which one, that, uh, well, they really, they, they really liked the Alice impersonator, and he also does do...
Oh, no, that wasn't you.
Oh, um...
That was more recent.
Um, oh, the two guys, are you talking about Switchback?
Switchback.
Really? Okay, they're like five hundred dollars.
Okay, forget it.
My, my concern is, how many people are we gonna get on a Wednesday?
Yeah.
Should it be a Friday night, or should it be Saturday afternoon?
Well, I would think a Saturday morning would be better than a Saturday...
Well, ice cream Saturday morning.
Oh, not ice cream, oh, that's right.
The kids would love it, the parents would.
I would love it, yeah. Ice cream works any time of day.
Any day.
Well, we should do something either like on the twenty-first or twenty-second.
Yeah, close to the time.
Even if we, you know, to get another table at the farmer's market and give something out, or, um, I don't know, provide music at the farmer's market that day?
Um, I noticed they've been having music over there. Well, I don't, maybe we should just wait until we have the Oak and House for Judy, and then...
Yeah, let's wait until we have the presentation.
Cause that should be soon, it might even be close enough that...
It might even be for Scuff, too, who knows?
For Scuff, for Scuff, that, I mean, it's pretty much easy, so I think...
Yeah.
Are we, do we wanna do Judy and Scuff on the same day?
No, I think they should have their own special day.
We would definitely probably have Scuffs by then.
Yeah.
So, um, we can see, um, you know, if Judy's, we'll be ready by then.
Then we probably don't wanna do ice cream social, we probably just wanna have...
Well, we'd do cake and coffee, or cheese and, you know, um...
Yeah, cake and coffee.
Cake and coffee.
In the auditorium.
Yeah.
Well, they already turned out for Scuff at, on Sunday morning, at, at Presbyterian Church.
Oh, for his, uh, memorial service?
Standing room only.
There was, that's what, yeah, they, they had a lot of people came out for that.
Okay, so we're gonna table the num, uh, Township Day then, right? Is that what everybody's saying?
Well, we might just combine it with, if we can figure out how to do it, with the, um...
We'll table till next month, until we come up with something.
We don't wanna lose it, though.
Yeah.
But we don't wanna lose Township Day?
No.
That's what, no, we don't. That's what, no, we don't, we're gonna.
No, we could always call it Township Day just because, you know.
Right.
You know, it, it doesn't have to be on the Wednesday.
We can make our own Township Day.
Yeah.
Right.
It's, it's a free country, it's America, yeah. We can do what we want.
I don't think we get enough publicity for the, the services and generosity that the township.
No, I agree, you know, and.
Well, I think we need to change.
Well, they get a job at the landmark.
Well, one thing we could do, I think, to help increase awareness about what we do is in our township newsletter, really.
Yes.
Highlight more what the trustees are doing.
Yes.
You know, I mean, even, you know, the grants that we've given out and other activities that go on.
I, we do.
I was gonna say, I see that.
We do.
We do. But also we need to, like, you know, have a little picture of us in the golf outing, you know, and have a picture of us giving out that stuff at Christmas time.
But we don't tell the movie titles in that newsletter, do we?
No.
Well, we should. That's a.
Maybe we do, I can't remember.
Do you know, Anne?
I don't think that, that.
I don't think we do.
I don't think so, it just says that you're, everyone's invited, not.
Right. What you gotta remember is Wayne, we're limited.
Space.
Space.
Yeah.
Eight and a half, eleven sheet of paper.
I know.
We're limited to what we put in.
I didn't realize that those movies cost us that much money is what I see in the, the invoices today.
The license.
What, $800?
Well, that's.
Fine.
It, it's not the rental of the movies, it's the.
License.
Can't remember.
The license.
Licensing.
Yeah.
We've been paying that for years, Wayne.
Okay, I, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying.
Yeah, but that's for the licensing, to be able to show the movies, otherwise we really get in trouble.
We pay that to the state?
No, we pay that to the movie companies.
Yeah.
Disney is the only one that doesn't allow it. They won't allow us to show any of the Disney movies.
Can we pay it to more than one movie company?
No, it's like one central.
Oh, okay.
You know, could I say, um, another thing we could do for Township Day is do a service project. Um, I'm currently working on a service project where we take old plastic bags and we cut them and then you roll that into a ball and then somebody knits it together to make, um, a bed mat for the homeless people or homeless vets. So we could spend, you know, a couple hours, um, there.
Why don't, why don't you call Andrew and have him put that on next month's agenda?
Okay, alright.
You know, rather than, you know, throwing stuff out right now where it's not on the agenda.
Okay, alright, you know, or plant flowers, I mean, that's another thing, but the, maybe the.
We got tons of those flowers and nobody's taking them.
Yeah, I know, for the milkweed, we could plant flowers, um, but these vans for the homeless, this, it's something everybody can do, it's a sitting down type thing and we could do that for an hour or two and then we could show and finish.
Who's we?
The us, the trustees.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's what.
When you say we, I didn't know what you were talking, us or people.
Maybe if we have milkweed left over, can we take it to the farmer's market?
Yeah, and give it out.
Yeah.
If we have what?
The milkweed.
The milkweed for the farmer's market.
Has anybody seen any Monarchs?
No.
I've seen, I've seen that one, I saw one this summer.
Okay, let's go on to FYI, um, fourth annual presentation for flags, anybody want to sign up? Please do and let us know in the office.
Well, you gotta drive if you're gonna take the flag.
That's right, and the pole.
And the pole.
And a decent sized vehicle.
It's a nice idea, but you have.
Vehicle. Okay. Approval of, any other visitors' remarks? Okay, approval of warrants.
Okay, first, we have a motion that the board authorized and ratified payment of the bills identified on the general warrant, August 2016, in the amount of $23,598, as presented to the board this ninth day of August, 2016.
Second of all.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Alright.
Uh, next, a motion that the board ratified and authorized payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants, utility warrant, August 2016, in the amount of $985.19, payroll warrant, August 2016, in the amount of $17,145.64, health warrant, August 2016, in the amount of $1,455.32, monthly filings, August 2016, in the amount of $7,388.97, and general assistance warrant, August 2016, in the amount of $630. All of the above is presented to the board this ninth day of August, 2016.
Second of all.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Kibitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, supervisors amendments and reviews, Anne stopped in today and had a question and I gave her a call before the meeting. Her question was, are we responsible for, like, when we order these AED machine, you know, whatever, if something goes wrong, are we responsible? And I told her, you know, our attorney said no from the very beginning, you know, he said everything you can find according to our grant request, you know, uh, but I gave Jim Kelly a call and I said, is there something that we can put in our grant request form to make it perfectly clear that they, you know, when they sign that grant request form, we are not, as a township, would not be responsible, let's say if it's a faulty AED and we can't get sued? And he said, yeah, they'll come up with, so I'm gonna put that in the, um, grant request. I'll show it to you next month.
Okay, good.
It's a very good point.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, it was okay from the very beginning.
Just a little more protection.
Because he reviewed it, but this is, I just threw out, I said, hey, let's try to get something in the, yeah, perfectly clear. Wasn't there a president that said, I want to make this perfectly clear? Okay, that's it. Um, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
On favor. And you're opposed.